Looks like you've got plenty of round bales stacked up for the winter.
It is.
You know, they seem to go a lot faster than you think. When you get them all in there.
We have to play your allegiance on you.
By springtime it disappears.
But I think you can probably still do the pledge.
Sure.
I don't think it has to be on me to do it.
Okay.
So, sorry, I forgot to put it down.
Where was it? Where were we going? They had to, you know, they put them inside that sleeve that went up. Must've been a half mile long.
Yeah. A lot of that's high moisture, eight typically.
It is eight o'clock. Could I get you all to stand and do the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will need a motion to approve the agenda.
Vote.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried unanimous. Need a motion to approve the claims. Does anybody have any discussion before I entertain a motion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Plath. Do I have a second? Second by Naft. Any discussion on the claims? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried unanimous. Here's your Mr. Whacter. Yeah. You want it called Doug?
I think it's going to be one.
It is. You can call 102 if he doesn't answer, but it's secretary.
Hey, Lisa's Dr. Don. We are. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the winter's over. Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
We are up to discussion decision on ordinance number three hundred that addresses the rest regulations and restrictions on the use of land for the transportation of hazardous liquids.
Yeah, just so public hearing.
Right.
Um, I provided a resolution to the board in their electronic folder. Uh, I think everyone should have seen an email from Tim Wimpel saying that the resolution was correct. And it's just a matter of the board setting the date, time, and location. I will say that when the planning and zoning commission, when they have their public hearing, they held it in this room, and the room was full, more than full, so.
Want to go to the election center?
I think that that might be worth considering.
When, when would we be able to do the public hearing? That's no less than four, no more than twenty, because that would have been.
Yeah.
So. So anytime.
Well, the earliest he's going to be able, if he gets it to the paper, he can have it to the paper at six, it can be published in nine.
Right, right.
And so then that your countdown would start from there, so the earliest would be.
We would have to publish in Sway City Bancroft, those two papers.
Yeah.
Because they're official as well, and the Algonah, uh, Casupri, Casup advance, excuse me.
So you're done.
Which would be on Thursday the ninth.
Right.
Hey, Tammy.
Yes.
We had talked the other day that it looked like it would be the twenty first. Does that sound correct?
Yeah.
There are two other hearings on the twenty first, uh, Level B and Level C road consideration also. So there'll be public hearings for that, nine o'clock and one at five.
Yes, but we can do those in here.
Yeah, however, just, I'm just making you aware.
Right.
Would that be on a, I guess, a public hearing? Would that be on a Tuesday morning, or would that be in an evening, or okay?
Maybe Tuesday maybe. We could do nine thirty on the twenty first. Let me check.
What time is our B and C hearings? That's at nine ninety-five.
Why don't we do it at ten, so they've got a chance to get over there and get set up?
Let me make sure we don't have anything else.
Do you got anything else on?
No, let me check the election center schedule too. You said the election center.
Is that open?
It's open.
Okay, election center is open.
Okay.
Mr. Naft, would you like to make a motion?
You ready for it? I.
Uh, this would be a motion to approve a resolution.
Right, we'll, we'll do that first, and then we'll set a time and date with the next motion.
Well, the resolution has the common date.
It's got it in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
This would be eleven.
Oh, two.
Eleven oh dash oh two.
Dash twenty-three dash oh one.
Okay. I would make a motion to adopt resolution eleven dash oh two dash twenty-three dash oh one to set a public hearing for Tuesday, November twenty-first at ten o'clock a.m. To receive comments on proposed amendment to county zoning ordinance number three hundred that addresses the regulation restriction of the use of land for the transport of hazardous liquid through hazardous liquid pipelines.
At the election center?
At, at the election center.
On second. I have a motion and a second. Does everyone understand the motion and the second? Is there any discussion on the motion and the second? If not, do a roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Naft?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Jerk?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock on Tuesday, November twenty-first.
See, do you have any questions on it, from the public?
There'll be notification in the three papers that were mentioned, and we'll also have a notification on our website. And that notification will include the, uh, it'll be, it'll also include the ordinance. So you will be able to, uh, just download a PDF of that ordinance and review it if you would like.
If anyone would like a copy before then.
It'll be available at the auditor's office as well.
And I can email it. If people have my email address, Tammy will be able to email it, I suppose. Uh, it'll be available, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We're up to construction on the road right away, Doug.
Uh, yeah, we, uh, received a request, uh, it was from Dave Beustrom, to, uh, put a tile underneath, I can't remember what street, I'm sorry.
Two thirty.
After we started looking and reviewing, we needed one more land owner to provide us a, uh, that they were aware of the project and they get permission to go and purchase a property. So at this time, we're not ready for the board to approve that. Uh, however, we would like, uh, if it would be alright with the board supervisors, if they would bring us all the information, and we would give them verbal approval and take care of the formality of the next meeting. I just want to make sure that the board is aware of it and the board has no, uh, no objections to.
Anybody have an objection? I think it's fine.
Very good. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. You're going to get Martin.
I'll grab Martin.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Thanks, man.
Thanks for coming in, everybody.
Alright. Sorry, guys.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Doug. Whatever it is.
Oh, where are you staying? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, yeah. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
I'll have a good one.
Thank you. You too.
You'll think of it later today.
I'm on it. She has yours from Tuesday.
Yep.
Every time you made a jump, every time you made connections.
I got some news.
And I said he could go ahead today with those unless you felt like doing this at all, and he said he would be available by tomorrow. Um, the one today is for Cairo, and he said he could go ahead and approve it if he was comfortable with that, otherwise he'd be available by tomorrow.
Good. Mr. Plath, who knows more about it than he does.
Okay.
Okay, this is a request number ninety, and I've been working with Brad Beadle on this, um, in reference to. Oh, it's in, uh, Harrison Township, it's, uh.
Yeah.
We're back.
It's in Drainage District Four, and he's asked, he's requesting some, uh, additional exploration up there. He's currently hooked into a private tile with, uh, Jay Goshi, and they were unable to come to an agreement for a lifetime. He's going to continue working with that, so. But he's asking that we dig up some more spots and check the county tile, and then start proceedings to, to repair the kind of county tile for his land. He's requesting that, um, uh, North Island Drainage should do the work. So we'll have to, we'll have to do, uh, dig up some more areas and check that tile further, and then, uh.
Does, do you happen to know how far we'll have to go to find a tile?
Well, what they dug up previously is obviously chemical was working, chemical county tile was working.
That was in his ground?
On Brad's ground, yeah. And, uh.
And it, yeah, it was bad shape, or just?
Yeah, it's plugged. It was plugged, broken, it's immense. There's a, probably, I'm guessing the whole thing might have to be replaced. And I'm thinking, they said it was a, do you remember, was it a thousand feet? Is that what you guys were talking about having it replaced?
I can't recall the feet yet.
Think it was like seven, eight hundred feet.
But that they were thinking it had to, and where they want to dig up here, is that on Jay Goshi's land?
Yeah, it's on the south side.
I think what he requested is on the southeast corner and the southwest corner, not the one that you're talking about now.
To the, on the south.
Be replaced.
No, that's what's on there, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's to be on his land?
It'd be on Jay.
That's on Jay, so we'll have to, we'll just have to make sure we call Jay, and, yeah, I know we're going to do, do some exploration there, get it, you know.
My landlord was home this weekend, and I can explain to him that that ten inch main that came up to the southeast goes across Beadle's, across the road, and hooks onto Robert J. Bell's farm. And, uh, thi- this year, we drowned it out, replanted, drowned it out again. That's the only spot I've lost in my, our entire operation. So since Jay, not blaming, but since he's tiled back in two thousand twelve or thirteen, that spot's been very slow. And we just don't know what's there, uh, we don't know what the shape it is. I'm going to say that the tile is in good shape, but when he patented, I don't know if he cut through all the ten inch for the outlet, hooked up private, hooked an eight to a ten, a six to a ten, like on the other quarter. Don't, don't really know what's there unless we really dig down for it. It should take a while. Uh, the southwest corner, I'm a little more vague on that because I'm not involved in that, uh.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll have to find out what's working.
Yeah.
If it's not working, then we're going to have to, we'll have to, uh, repair, put, you know, replace that main. Or that lateral.
Well, like I said, I'm guessing that one's okay, but I, I don't know for sure.
You know until you're lucky.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I know if we dug up that day out there, that's obviously not that was working.
That's different one. Uh, Jay did all that tile and boxed Brad in. Didn't talk to Brad about nothing, doing nothing, just went in and hooked up, so he don't know, he's hooked to the county tile, or whatever. The one we're talking about replaced, now that was done ten or twelve years ago, was that, Brad said, I had some drainage, not saying it was full, half-full, or whatever. It's full now because it's been destroyed, it's been hooked up different, and nothing's running through it now. But that was ten or twelve years ago when this, this, uh, project that Jay did.
Right. Okay, so they want, they want a supervisor, or two supervisors out there when they take this up to, you know, look at it with them. Some logic, you'd be able to.
I'll give you a call.
So, yeah, just call, call Roger when you're ready, and, and if he can't make it, or if he's still calling, he'll like come up to it.
Do we set a certain date for that, and like?
No, it's just whatever, whatever.
I'm so busy now that.
I think he can, uh, do it.
I'll give you a, a week's notice.
Okay.
Like I did the last time.
Yeah, and I, because we're going to have to get ahold of Jay, and.
Yeah.
Letting know that it's possible that we might be doing some investigating in his land.
Yeah.
Yeah, too, so.
So we need no confrontation again?
Well, no, the, well, it's, we have, we have the, we have the right to, you know, to look up, but we just, it's courtesy is to let the land. I know you're going to be digging, that's all. But you just don't want it, nobody wants to be surprised.
Sometimes the landowner gets notified, and sometimes they don't.
I probably believe in that, though.
Yeah, but that, that's.
I mean, even though we have the right to go there, it doesn't mean you shouldn't spend up there, although you're going to be there. Doing the investigation, so.
You know, I know that didn't happen, but that's the way it is, you guys, you know.
I mean, it's only, it's the right thing to do. Alright, well, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, this will get approved, and then we'll, you'll have to let some, let Roger or me know. One, you're going to be out there, and we'll, we'll try to get out, make sure we're out there to look at it with you. And figure out what we want to do, but more likely we're going to probably, I guess, we're going to have to replace the tile out there more likely, but.
You got Tim's and Jay's phone number?
They, I don't.
You don't?
What's that?
I don't have his phone number.
I don't, I don't have it.
I have both Tim's and Jay's numbers.
Do you?
Do you?
Alright.
Once you get ahold of Mr. Naft, and, and then he'll get ahold of me, and maybe both of us will come out.
Okay. I want to have Mike's number on, Jay's number on this request here, so we have him.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's Tim Goshi here. Jay.
Jay.
Jay Goshi and Tim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know which one owns it.
It's Jay's.
It's Jay's.
It's either the two.
Jay's, the real name is Jim Junior.
Oh, you know Jim.
Call him Jay.
Jay.
But it's, Jay's going to need a call, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Jim Junior, but he called Jay.
Oh, okay, so Jay is the only one that's all through it? Yeah. Only land? Yeah.
Well, it's Jim, because that's, that's really.
Okay, okay, I'd like to call him Jay's. Yeah. Do you have a motion now, or? No, Roger's got some, too.
Oh, you got yours, yeah.
Yeah, while he's doing that, I have a request number eighty-eight. It's, uh, broken tile.
We approved those last week.
Oh, you did? I just got to sign them?
Yeah, yep.
And I'm done. Do you want, uh, want contractor's name? Has Thompson got any of those done that we gave him? Can I give him another one?
Sure.
Do you want to call him, like, tile number one, or two? Well, we're going to go down to his.
I bet, I bet you're good to you, yeah.
How, how far are you going to go with the exploration into the property there?
Till we find out what the problem, what, what's going on there. Right, where the hookups are, yeah. We want to search the, the county tile, pretty much the width of the farm, see what condition it is, but it runs east and west, runs from west to east for a while. And we should take it up periodically to see what the county mains like. Because I mean, one dig ain't going to show us much.
Two.
Two or three might, you know, I mean, we're not going to go out there and destroy Jay's farm.
No, I'm not saying you are, I just was curious where this.
Yeah.
Where, where you're planning to stop.
Till the farmer's satisfied, I guess, you know, I mean. Probably, or these two, he's involved in it now, too.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And I don't think it's going to be a long exploration.
They're still, yeah.
It depends what it's hooked up to, and if he has astride though, change county main. Yeah. You know, and how, how do we know?
We don't know what's going on, not necessarily.
I don't know if he's ever provided tile maps to show what they've done. He has shown me another part of the field on his phone, tile. That's all we got. So that's a different area than what we're talking to.
Well, it's, it's the only thing, the only choice you have, when you can't get a, you could lifetime use it, you have to use what you put in, then you gotta.
We got, seek other options.
Well, we have to use the county, you know, make sure the county tile is there for rest and for rest of the house, that's all you do, you know.
Uh, I guess, you know, it's not my district, and this is not my decision either, but, but, uh, and, and please don't take this as any offense to you, Steve, but, uh, being a, just from my basic knowledge of a lot of tension, history of tension there between landowners and, and, uh, I just, I, is it the best, would be best to have a, a third party, you know, to the situation contractor come in and do that?
That's why you want supervisors up.
Oh, I understand, but just so that everyone, everyone won't. Or anything.
Well, the landowner, the landowner wants, it's requested, Brad is requesting that we work, so we have to buy it, but it's.
We don't have to, I'm just, I'm just making a suggestion.
Well, I, I'm going to listen to what the landowner wants, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to suggest we do, so.
I like to say, I don't have no conflict with Jay, I have no, you know, nothing, never had any deal with Jay. Probably the other farmers have got the issues, not me. I'm just a neutral person in this deal.
Okay.
And that's why they want me. You know, I think Steve will treat us good as anybody, they have a price.
Well, exactly, I'm, you know, not downplaying you at all, this.
No.
And the tensions are created by that, and given Jay, Jay's bills that are joining to handle, it's like Brad, he can't even hook up to the county main, and he's got a fifty thousand dollar bill from, apparently he guys did, and he gladly handed Jay's bill over him. What do you, what are we supposed to think? These are the things that start this, and that shouldn't be done. But, but anyway, well, you just whenever.
Well, that's, that all have to be issued out after we go.
Well, whenever you get ready to do it, let us know, so.
Okay.
Uh, we need a motion to, I.
Yeah.
Somebody make a motion to have the supervisor.
Mr. Whacter, you trying to make a motion?
Yep.
Naft, you want to second it?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second for the supervisors to do their requests. Any discussion?
That's if you guys are present for that.
What?
We'll get somebody there.
Do you want to include that in the motion?
In the motion.
Oh, we'll have.
Either one or two supervisors.
We'll have one or two supervisors there.
During the investigation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. Let us know when you're ready to go.
Okay. Appreciate it, everybody have a good day.
You too.
More? Anything else to come before the good of Cassuth County? If not, who would like to make a motion to adjourn? Plath? I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys, for being today.
Thanks, Sam.
Oh, we're good.
Appreciate it.